So, it is 5:30. I'd like to call the College Place City Council's March 5th work session to order. If we'd all please stand and...
For our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, if we could have a moment of silence to reflect on this evening's work. All except for the PA system. Seeing that, Chief Tomaros, Mr. Hartwig, leasing concept for police vehicles.
Okay, so I guess I'll start out here a little bit. And so, as you know, police vehicles are uniquely subjected to aggressive use through emergency response driving and for lack of law enforcement. Overtime this wears on engines, axles, and chassis on what civilian or private vehicle operating vehicles. Higher mileage vehicles present cost or repairs while increasing liability to the department. Mechanical failure during pursuit or inability to respond to a call can increase liability or injury to one of our officers or some of the community. I'm presenting the option for vehicle replacement to leasing versus purchasing. Leasing is a cultural shift that's been adopted by many police departments throughout the country. Nearby municipal police department has been leasing police cars for years. Leasing saves time, money, and is easier to budget and plan for. We were budgeted to replace one vehicle this year. Unfortunately, we have more than one vehicle that needs to be replaced. With the lease option, we're able to lease four cars for around the same purchase price as a new vehicle this year. We have one car that's nine years old, we have one car that's seven years old, and some that's five years old. There is no longer a need to conduct procurement under lease of equipment from multiple vendors or to do the equipment installation. This alone will save countless work hours. Our leasing company does all the work and delivers a vehicle turnkey to the city. With the lease program, we can provide our community and our officers with reliable and professional equipment they deserve. And without a doubt, police vehicles represent a brand. So, we want to make sure that we have good equipment for them. So, low and positive for leasing. Vehicles will always be...
Under warranty, this saves taxpayers money and maintenance costs. And we also chose a local vendor, Dodge, so we can have our warranty work and our local work done close to home. Right now, with our Fords, we take cars an hour away to get any warranty work done. So, there's just a lot of benefits to the leasing program. So, anyways, questions?
Ms. Selby.
So, I've never leased, but I was very confused by the idea of a lease where it has value of $1 at the end. I always thought the whole point was you're only paying for the first three years or whatever of the vehicle.
Those are options. You can do that. And some leasing companies are set up that way. One of the companies I looked at, you had the option to purchase it for $7,000 at the end of the lease. This particular company was $10,000 below that bid, and they offered you could purchase the vehicle for $1 at the end of the lease. So, that was a significant savings. Yes?
Have we looked at buying the warranty separately and then buying the vehicles through the state's purchasing thing? Because I got a warranty because I have a Ford. It's basically an insurance policy, but because I didn't buy it from Ford, I can take my car anywhere.
So, this vehicle is completely 100% under warranty. That's one of the beauties of the lease. So, under the entire time that we had that vehicle, it would be under warranty. And the vehicle is still being acquired through the state procurement.
Wait, I don't understand your question. Is that what you're asking? Well, my understanding was they were going to add a warranty to the manufacturer's warranty.
No, we looked at adding a maintenance package for oil changes. I think that might be what you were...
The manufacturer's warranty for five years only included powertrain, not everything. Is that what it was going to be? Or did I understand that wrong?
Your warranties on vehicles come three-year, 36,000 miles for bumper-to-bumper, in other words, everything. And the other one is the five-year or 100,000-mile, whichever comes first. And that's powertrain. Okay? So, what we would anticipate, if you decide to go ahead with the lease idea that we're presenting, is that we probably would go with a five-year lease. That covers us through the powertrain warranty and then offload it after that. The problem that you have, if you entertain that option to buy, that puts us into a different category possibly with the bid laws. So, the idea here would be strictly lease. And then after that term of the lease is over, the vehicles go away, new ones come back in.
So, would we... So, the title wouldn't be in our name?
Well, that's what we're still trying to find out, because some lease agreements puts it in the agency's name and so forth. And that makes a difference in regards to the bid law.
The ERS company that I've been working with closely, it is not in our name. It's in Bankport's name. Bankport name when we lease through. But it would be registered to us, because under state law, you have to register it.
Right.
So, you're asking if the title's in our name?
Yeah, because according to that email chain that was in our packet, that makes a difference.
Yeah.
So, I'd call and clarify that.
So, generally, if at least it's happened on me, when I've done this, where I used a loan to purchase a car, the registered owner was me, but the lien holder, I mean, the owner, was the loan agency until it was paid.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I haven't read through all the interchanges of emails and whatnot. I apologize for that. But yeah, to your point, I think, Mal, there would be no residual value at the end of the lease, in other words. We're not making higher monthly payments to have something of value at the end. We're also not putting money down to have to buy lower lease payments. Is that correct?
No. We spec the number of vehicles. They give the price and the loans on that.
Okay. And it's for... So, at the end of this, the vehicle obviously is dented, scratched, has higher miles. What's that scenario? In other words, we will then owe the lease company... They will do an appraisal or evaluation based on... So, one car gets $100,000, one gets $150,000.
Okay. Talking with the lease company, these leases on the police vehicles don't have a mileage limit attached. So, the mileage is not... Other than that, if we damage it, we repair it. We do the general servicing on it. That comes through our facility. Anything with warranty goes to the dealer.
So, these Dodge, are these four-wheel drive?
All-wheel drive.
They're all-wheel drive, I was just saying. Okay.
And I just want to make a note that we're referencing ERS, which is the company we're working closely with. The other company we were... I was looking at the North Bend, there is a mileage restriction on that. So, definitely you have to fix any damages.
You know, personally, I see this as it's like if you start leasing vehicles, you kind of start the clock up. You know, it kind of goes back to the fact that we've got some city vehicles, not police cruisers, but city vehicles that were 2003 or whatever. Yeah. And so, those are inexpensive now, except for some upkeep and whatnot, and we have to get new vehicles. So, really, it is a dependability issue where you say you can hang on to something until you've driven the last mile out of it type of a thing versus having sharp-looking vehicles. The only concern I have is we're kind of resetting the clock here a bit in that we now can sort of say, we're going to buy a vehicle this year. No, we're not going to buy a vehicle this year as far as from a cash perspective. I don't want to say cash flow, but it sort of is that. Whereas if we start leasing, we're going to get these up on a reset time every five years. And so, I'm guessing we would stagger these. What's the plan? Yeah, so in other words, you'd get...
Basically, you're looking at 12 vehicles on this lease program. That's the officers that are on duty. So, right now, we have 12 vehicles that would be on this lease program. So, I'd anticipate we'd be looking at four every three years, and that gets the 12 going. The issue we have, or you could plan for it and budget and possibly do eight next year, that gets us more in line with being within that $100,000 or the five-year program. If we don't do more than four, if we only do four next year, we're going to have vehicles that are past the five years or the $100,000.
Yeah. And my only concern there is I didn't want... You know, and you guys aren't doing this, so I get it. But it's not a case where if we wanted to jettison out of this at some time in the future, a lease program, it wouldn't be a case where, oh my goodness, we have to buy 12 vehicles this year, you know, or something like that. And so...
I would... Yeah. I mean, that's a possibility. But our experience on the police fleet is they can last longer than five years. Okay? We won't argue. And most of the time, we don't have problems. They last five, six, seven years. But you run the risk of the transmission going or an engine blowing as you continue on. So, if we were to stop the lease program, then we'd have to evaluate how that transition's going to be back to purchasing individual vehicles.
And that's my only point, is once you've gone down this rabbit hole, I'll call it, you know, in a good sort of way, it's going to be hard to get back out of this, I think, in the future. I don't know if you share that.
Well, I'll just speak from the equipment. The ideal is to have those five years and keep them fresh. I don't think once you start, you're going to want to go back. You know, it's better. Those are vehicles that are used every day and in emergency service. And you're going to want them fresh.
And I agree with that. I'm thinking only five, 10 years down the road, if we had financial pressures, that we would not be able to sustain this, you know, the cash outlays. But then, of course, then we're now looking at the fact that there would be a huge cash outlay to get out of something like this and go into a purchase program. So, yeah.
You'd probably buy the vehicles outright at that point for the dollar, and then you'd extend their life.
Yeah. I'm just taking worst-case scenario here.
I think it's important to keep in mind that the number of vehicles is based on having the patrol officers have a take-home vehicle. I mean, if it ever got to the point where economically we couldn't do that, we'd have to fall back to the old method of just sharing a vehicle amongst that. So, there's a...
Just one last... I'm sorry, just one last quick... And I'll shut up then.
No, no.
You know, one of the things I see really...
Yeah.
No, I think one of the things, too, we're not able perhaps to compensate our officers and others at a rate. And I think it really speaks volumes to have dependable, nice vehicles that they live in during the day and work through. And so, I think that's an advantage, to have a sharp-looking, nice, reliable vehicle. It's something I think we can give, you know, in response to...
I agree.
In other areas, we're trying to adjust perhaps other areas, but ratios and pay and all the rest of it. But to me, this is something that is kind of a give here. Anyway.
I agree.
Mr. Cleveland.
So, did we have like a definite number? Maybe it's in here. I just got confused. But do we have a definite number of the cost difference? And is it, I'm presuming, going to be in the cost savings area to do this?
Well, to me, the lease for these four vehicles is somewhere near the cost of purchasing an outright new vehicle. So, ultimately, over a three-year... If you were to do all 12 vehicles, you'd be looking at roughly $150,000 to $170,000 a year at one time, if you were to do it at one time, rather than what we're doing is spreading that out over a three-year period. I don't know if that answered your question, but it's...
So, is it roughly equivalent to our expectation?
It's pretty much equivalent.
Yeah. Okay. Is that what like the other cities have done this?
I can't answer you on that. I can't answer you on that.
Could we find out if there's some cost benefit or if they found it more expensive?
We can talk. Well, Police Chief would be better to talk with those agencies.
So, purchase, lease, it's about the same. It's about getting to wash. Where you save your money is the time for procurement. When I buy a radar, it's a different state vendor than when I buy a computer. And when you buy a light bar, and so, you have to get all these items together. And then you get them shipped to you. And then you have to make payments to them. And then you install it, which takes a long time to install. So, where your savings is, is through maintenance and in purchasing and installing. So, if you were to add those costs up, the man-hours that would go into something like that, I would say you're saving yourself probably about $5,000, $6,000 per car.
Yeah. Just giving you an example, we bought these state patrol vehicles for $8,000, $9,000. You're almost doubling that with all the equipment that you have to put into them and so forth. This way, you're buying a vehicle that's complete. One of the advantages is that if you buy that complete, if you take... It's hard to explain, but if you take the four vehicles that we have, and the new ones need equipment out of this vehicle to make these operational, that vehicle, those vehicles are out of service now. So, you're...
We're playing some musical chairs.
You need to buy these things complete, which is the plan right now. They'll get new radios, new bars, everything.
Mr. Rosatella.
I would also mention that with the original plan where we were buying the used vehicles from the state, the issue is that it only works if the state has the vehicles to sell. And we're still deficient on vehicles from that side. So, that's an issue, too. You can't fully rely on that, because they still weren't able to fill the ordering. Actually, they are on one of them, because they said they aren't going to have it. So...
And the other thing to go along with that is the vehicles you buy from the state, they're already extended their life. They're beyond their useful life in terms of emergency service. So, I mean, they'll operate and so forth, but if you're trying to live within the five-year, 500,000, I mean, five-year, 100,000 miles, the state patrol vehicles already have well over 100,000 miles.
Ms. Selby.
Could we see a breakdown of the costs of the different options all beside each other with everything included? Because there keeps being new pieces and stuff, and I'm just getting really confused. So, I mean, I don't expect it today, but I mean, before it comes before the council.
Well, ERS is like...
Are you... Let me clarify.
I mean like a table on one page.
Chief?
Chief, please.
I mean like a table on one page.
You'd like a table on purchase versus lease?
Yes.
Yeah, something like maybe over 10 years or five years of what is the cost of a vehicle per year versus, you know, so we have the option of if we own it all ourselves versus... And what are the costs all associated with that, including man-hours and whatnot? And what are the costs of leasing? And, you know, including things like maintenance and downtime? It'd be nice to see that information kind of in a nicely organized format.
That can be done. Maintenance is going to be a wash.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson, then Ms....
I thought you were going to shut up. Here I go again.
Don't shut up. That's my question.
You ask questions so that I don't have to, really.
So, what happens is, you know, we're going to go home tonight. We're going to turn on the TV, and you'll be able to get a Honda Accord lease for $189 a month, you know? And so, wow, let's go do that. And that's probably over three years or something like that. And really, what you're paying for is really, the way I understand it, you're paying for just the wear and tear on that three years. The company thinks it's going to be... The car's going to be worth this much three years out. You know how that works. And then, so at the end of the year, they may be a wash. If you beat the car up, you may owe them some money. If it's really in good shape, they'll say, you know, we agreed that you get $4,000 back. You can take that money and put it on another. What's interesting about this scenario, we're saying we're going to use this sucker up over five years, really. It's not a case where we're trying to get super-low payments, because we're worried about making our house payment and our car payment and buying groceries. It's something where we're saying we're going to take the value of that car and divide it in... It's basically, it's like five years of car payments without having a down payment. I think that's one of the ways of looking at it. So, as far as the purchase of the vehicle, it kind of looks like it's even-steven. I think to your point, though, it's really looking at a wider breadth of... When do we have to replace transmissions? Oil changes, an oil change is an oil change. Spark plugs are spark plugs. But it's... How do these things wear over time? I think that's the issue over the life of five, six, seven years. How many transmissions? How many radiators? How many, you know, those types of things? Where how does that play with the brand-spanking-new shiny car every five years, where trying to hang on to them, put engines in them and transmissions? I think that, to my perspective, that's about the only outside issue when you're comparing apples to apples, perhaps. But share if I'm on track here or...
Well, again, just our experience with the fleet right now, we've changed one transmission over the last several, several years over all the vehicles that we've had. We don't have that much in regards to the transities. But then again, we try to get rid of them. And that's been our plan, is to get rid of them after five years.
So, I would expect to see this pretty tight. You're either going to write a check for a new vehicle, a new cruiser with all the gear and everything ready to go eventually as you've outfitted it, or you're not going to write a big check for 50, 60 grand. You're going to pay the 50, 60 over five years.
Yeah. And then the other issue, bigger, another big issue is the amount of time there without a vehicle while we're trying to make the transition of equipment that we've got to take out of that car and install in the new one.
But cost to cost.
But cost to cost.
Yeah.
Ms. Selby, then Ms. Sherman.
Well, and if my recollection is correct, we had said in the budget, money that's in the budget was to buy a new car. So, I don't think we need to compare what it costs. I think, you know, the old cars are a separate issue. But I, you know, what does it cost to buy a car, including the man-hours that you take and everything? And then what does it cost to lease a car? And I don't... To me, it looks like we're just financing it. And I don't understand why we're... I don't understand what the leasing gets, because I understand the kind of leasing that you talked about, where you're taking the first three years. But when you're using it all up, it just seems to me like you're financing it. Can we finance stuff?
Yes and no. And the difference that we see here is that we would have to go out, probably in this case, to buy vehicles in this amount to get through the replacement cycle, to bond them, to go out, try and float a bond, to buy four vehicles, going to run $175,000 to get them out the door, plus the process of going to the state, getting a state vehicle, getting them to show up, and then getting them, however they get prepped, whether we do the prep or we send them off to someplace else that does the prep.
That's a good point.
So, essentially, this is a different way of financing.
It's really looking at a different way of financing. And the ability here is to, instead of purchasing one vehicle, which if you look at the vehicle cost this year, what we're doing is ending up financing for over a five-year period and rotating it that way. And then at the end, they take them back, or however the terms of the lease are. It's a different way of doing that. As you've seen in the email, there's a whole bunch of hoops we have to be sure that we jump through so that we don't run afoul of the purchasing requirements or the bid process.
Yeah. And that's what I would like to see, is kind of like the processes for each on one page and the cost for each on one page. I mean, I think the information's all here. It's just a matter of putting it together, because...
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. What we have is an estimate from a company that says, here's what the cost of a vehicle would be through us. Whether or not that would be our cost if we went out and did it all ourselves, I don't know, because we haven't asked that question. Ms. Sherman?
Okay. So, my question's a little bit different. I want to know, like, with the budget and the capital plan that we have, how long until we get them to be all leased? What's the order that we would get rid of them? Are we getting rid of the new state patrol vehicles that we just got because of their mileage? What's our average mileage? What are some of these things?
And that could be a difference of opinion, you know, because he may...
Mileage, that's a fact.
But, you know, our experience says get rid of the high-mileage vehicles first. That's the kicker. So, you know, if you allow us to do the first four, first, we'd get rid of the Crown Vics, that are the ones. And then the two with the highest mileage. One is one that we own, and one is one that is a state patrol vehicle. And then from after that, then you'd go with the high-mileage vehicles.
And so, that would be four this year, and how many next?
We would like... I'd say we'd likely be looking, depending on how budget goes, between the four and a, likely four, because we want to do it in classes, so that way there's a certain amount of vehicles that phase out each year. And keep in mind that they have 45,000. We had budget for the new vehicle this year. That wasn't the equipment replacement plan projecting out the following year and the year after that. So, it's just a different way of allocating it, but the money was in there in the plan.
So, ultimately, we do, though, have $103,000 every year to lease 14 patrol vehicles? Without changing anything?
We have 100... No. We have roughly 50,000 every three years to lease the four vehicles each year.
Currently? So, this would be this $103 to get up to leasing 14 vehicles, $103,000 or less, this is a different number? This is what's on the document that I put together?
Is that the original talking points I put together?
I think so.
Maybe.
Yeah. So, those are based off of old numbers?
Who looks at the ones that say new numbers?
The bottom one?
I don't know. What's our total for leasing 14 vehicles a year? I'm looking at the...
Yeah, those are my original talking points I put together for Michael.
Okay. So, you have it updated?
Don't use those numbers.
So, what's the total that it would be?
On a five-year lease, it's $11,000 a vehicle.
Times four.
So, it'd be about $150,000.
And so, we then just need to be... We have to increase the budget allowance to that by the time we get a couple of years down the road?
Yeah.
Well, to your point, though, are we funding for replacement of vehicles right now into the...
The equipment replacement.
Equipment replacement.
Yeah. We're getting near the end stages of having the sustainable replacement.
Right. So, is this a case of not funding that, but using that?
Right.
Yeah. So, it's not a... So, yeah, then the question is, is it a net?
Yeah.
So, doesn't that have to...
Right. Because, yeah. So, we would stop funding that, but that would go into operations?
Exactly. It's juggling money around both.
Right. But it's not like we're doing both.
Exactly.
Cool. I like that.
The only thing we'd have to do is to make sure that we budget appropriately for maintenance.
Yeah. That and for the other vehicles that would not be leased out of the police fleet.
Like what?
Well, the chief's car, the detective's vehicle, and the new officer that we got.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Yeah. So, those types of deals, the trailer, and whatever other vehicles they have, you know, radar, all those little things that we're responsible for out of fleet maintenance. So, those would have to be planned for as well.
So, what I heard, let me make sure we've got this right, is that we'd like a side-to-side comparison on purchase vice leasing. And we'll have to... You know, I don't know whether we can get to the detail, you know, the information you see here from the leasing company is their estimation of those things. We'll have to see if we can come up with something different.
Or apply.
Well, again, my assumption is they're going to do all of this. They'll gather it all, bring it to one place, have it installed in one place. We may or may not be able to do that.
The quote I got, the last quote I got for a vehicle... The, the quote I got, the last quote I got for a, a vehicle, fully equipped, I mean, that is fully equipped. We don't transfer anything from our vehicle to theirs, is 49,700 for one. And, and so you, you can see this on that, the 49,000 on a five-year lease is $11,000 per vehicle. So, you know, you're roughly, which we'll see.
So the cost compared...
So you're looking at $11,000 roughly for four vehicles.
Well, $11,000 per vehicle.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Or if we're doing 14, then it'd be, again, as I said, about 150,000 a year, right? So the question is, is how do our current, like, replacement costs and maintenance and equipment compare? And that, that's just the biggest question here as far as I'm concerned.
This is a tough, so, you know, I, to your point, I think it really needs to be a five-year on five-year analysis. It needs to be, what would be the five-year lease cost on the vehicle versus if we purchased it today? And what is the estimate of what the maintenance cost would be over five years? It's going to be an estimate because it's got to be five-year against five-year. And one of the other issues we're looking at is we're probably looking in the, in the rearview mirror at a vehicle we bought for 36,000, I don't know, 40. And so then you start comparing, so it has to be kind of this point forward. Because we, we start going back in the records and saying, what did that cruiser cost us? Maybe we bought it for 35,000 and now we're buying them for 49,000, well, you know. So it's not an apples and apples thing either, so.
And, and just keep in mind too, we, we're talking about saving man-hours for city employees who already have, we're, we have limited resources and limited time, which is part of the problem. So I, the studies I've looked...
And that needs to be, that's what policy needs to be on the budget thing.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be part of the cost, I would think, to keeping it as owning. So if we can estimate that cost and be like, well, we wouldn't have this anymore, kind of thing.
Can Jack get that?
Yeah, possible.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
We're just making something up.
See, the real question is, why don't we just switch to horses?
The maintenance part is really, the maintenance part is a wash. The maintenance part is a wash. We're, we're going to change oil or we're going to have somebody else change oil. That, that's a wash. The, the issue is this, really the setup, all the time that it takes to transfer equipment into another vehicle and, and, and the time that it takes. If we had a...
Yeah, so, keep thinking, we talk about transferring equipment.
Whereas this is...
My understanding is, is that as the, as these police vehicles mature, we won't be able to take a lot out of our old vehicles to put in a new vehicle.
Correct. I mean, radios go out of date and so forth.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I think you captured correctly what it is that we wanted on the five-year comparison. But I also heard that we kind of wanted a projection of how do we get from here to the 14? And how does that compare with our current plan?
Right.
So a this way and a this way.
Well, I, you know, the short part of this is, it's faster.
Yeah, but I...
Yeah.
Just want to see it laid out.
Yep, okay.
Other questions?
We are A.D.
But you're not cheap.
No, we're not cheap.
See, seeing none. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hartwood. Thank you, Chief Tamaris.
Can we ask if there's questions from the peanut gallery? Because they were kind of weighing on this earlier too. Did you guys, did we miss anything?
Well, with Mr. Peterson's question, you can directly compare these because if you go to the... So we're kind of looking at the same thing. That's why we're sitting here. So if I go to the state bid website, I can configure the vehicle as I want, as I get it from the state bid. And when I say configure the vehicle, that's not any of the interior equipment. That's what kind of standard equipment, like when I go in to buy my car at the local dealer store. I'm going to get this size engine, this, this and this. So you can go directly on the state bid tomorrow, look at the cost, and that will give you the current cost of buying that particular vehicle. And you can compare it directly to what, what your lease is getting you.
Because to your point, the lease company's not going to do this for free.
Yeah.
It's the time value of money five years out, so it will always be more expensive than a cash payment off of the state bids. No?
Not necessarily. The volume that he's doing, he's actually under state bid on his vehicles. At least when I priced him out for the vehicle that we were looking at. His price on the vehicle was under. And what I did is I sent him exactly when we go out to the state bid to, to get our vehicle, I sent him the sheet of this is what, this is the vehicle we want and this is the configuration that we wanted it. And he, he actually came back cheaper.
It's amazing.
See, we just sent them the state bid with everything that we wanted and all the extra equipment that we wanted, and he came back with the price.
Makes you wonder something wrong with the state bid.
They save money by just, for instance, a light bar. We, they, they're, they're vendors. So they pass that savings on to us and that's where they're saving their money. So they're just to buy that cost or we have to pay an additional, on top of that. So it's nickel and diamond things to get the price down. I mean, it's, it's not a lot different, but it's enough to keep the price lower than purchasing that right now.
It's a big deal, guys, changing horses here in Mid-June, so that's why we're, we're deliberate of. Yes, thank you.
And, and I think the other thing you have to look at is you have to tweak your mindset in that, like personally, I would never lease a car. Because I grew up in that generation where you got to have something tangible at the end of it.
Yeah.
But, but you have to remember, we're using these cars, we're not keeping anything at the end. We're, we're dragging the dregs out of this car. And when we get done with it, we tow it off and, you know, kick it over the cliff, so to speak.
Yeah.
So if you're maximizing what you get out of that timeframe and you're going to replace it, I don't know how your mileage is, but we're looking at probably five years is the max that we can drive that vehicle. And you're also looking at safety of an officer, at least on a Ford interceptor. They recommend 100,000 miles, get rid of that car and absolutely don't drive it after 130,000. So if you're, you're picking up a, a car from state patrol and you're picking it up with 108,000 miles on it, you're kind of...
We'd get about two years out of it.
That's our hope, to get two years out of this car. And you, and you asked a question about mileage. We don't know yet because these cars were driven hot up until just a couple of months ago. Now we all have cars.
Yeah, that's going to go down.
So we don't know what mileage looks like yet. Like, you know, it's, it would seem like a simple question, but in, in, in the younger cars that the city has have less miles than the state cars. But the state cars are in better shape because they were driven by one officer and not being driven 24 hours a day.
Highway miles, yeah.
They, they're all highway miles. They don't, I mean, the, our other cars, I mean, every time you turn a corner, you hear cra- cra- cra. I mean, the car bends and they, they've been driven hard. So they, even though they're higher mileage cars, the state cars are in better shape.
And we're getting, we're, we're getting an idea on, on what annual usage is by a driver now that we're able to track it, so.
My next ride along will be in a new car because I got the creepy one and it was annoying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That sheriff car was really nice though.
No, it was okay. It was more comfortable, for sure.
Other questions? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Hartwood. Mr. Wizatello, Utility Transportation Advisor.
Uh, thank you. So, so the staff were looking at revising the utility code. The meat of that is still going through staff. However, one thing that we did reach consensus on was the need for, that would help with being advisory commission on such issues. Because when we have workshops or other meetings about transportation projects or capital projects in general, it's like your standard open house where you get very limited, you know, public showing up. And, and then everyone comes out with the, and want to flip out. So what many cities have done, and now you definitely, you score extra points for your Transportation Improvement Board grants and other grant opportunities is by having this like citizen advisory board for the utility systems as well as transportation, but would be one body. Recommendations that would have five folks, four of whom would represent utility customers. One would be a representative of the university. And basically, four-year terms and meetings would be minimum quarterly or as needed. But plenty of cities have this and that, that's a recommendation for the code for this body. And Wall Wall has it too.
Yeah, the only thing I'd recommend is we put a council member on it.
Oh, okay.
We're not on any other committee. Why do we need to be on this one? We're not on the planning committee. We're not on, I'm just wondering, we're not on Parks and Armor. We kind of get, what's the difference?
They're advisory to us or is this...
They're, they're advisory. I, you're, you're now starting, you're now starting to start dealing with some significant issues about infrastructure planning?
Yeah.
Ms. Sylvie?
Um, I think this is a great idea. My only question was, does the transportation part overlap with our planning?
I, I mean, with the planning group, I, we were struggling with that question ourselves. But planning is more long-term with land use and network. Transportation, we're seeing this more as like a project-based thing where, especially on C Street or other ones, it'd be good to get a broader breadth of opinion. But that's always a challenge because you advertise all over the place and, you know, no one shows up.
So, so planning would deal with the longer-term transportation issues?
Yeah.
And this committee with the shorter?
Bingo.
Okay. You might want to write that down somewhere.
Yeah, I...
Somewhere where, when we're all gone, people know what the plan was.
What she said.
What we agreed to.
And this overlaps. There's overlap some with the Metropolitan Planning Organization functions and... So more to follow. Any other? College Place flag.
Okay, so this is bringing this back, back up. If you recall originally, last year, the high school turned in some examples, but really didn't meet like all of the assets and other things that would need to be on a flag. So one of the things that we tried to do is Washington State University has this organization called the Rural Community Design Initiative. They actually helped do the College Avenue design standards. And Bob Krikak, who leads that, he offered to essentially help with this to get the graphic design students to do a design shirt. They actually toured College Place. Mike Dungy led them to tour the whole area and talked to the folks and they went back to Pullman and then came up with various designs. So we just got this yesterday, but there's about close to 29 different designs for a flag. And many of them have like what the inspiration was for the standards and the design. So the general thought behind this is they have a, put this in a Survey Monkey survey and see how folks rank all the flag designs and see how, which one comes up to the top or where it goes. But there's about 29 designs on here.
It was too many for my brain to comprehend, so I figured that we need to go to someone else. Oh gosh, no. Can we ask for...
To a conference.
Yes, seriously. Can we ask for any tweaks?
I, I talked to Bob Krikak with this week, yeah.
Because the first set I really, really like except for the little Pac-Man thing. So I think if, if he changed that circle, if he changed it to make that look more like the tower.
Yeah.
Rather than, because every time I look at, I just see Pac-Man.
This is going to be like ordering lunch.
Well...
I want steak, you want sushi.
I, I'm just saying, I think those, that particular set of designs would work a little better.
Survey Monkey guys.
We'll Survey Monkey it, we'll get some, get some feedback and...
I'll share it on Facebook. That's as much as I want to do with creativity.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can get minor changes done. The, the issue was, the issue with the last time is by the time we conveyed changes, the main graphic artist graduated and we ran for decades.
Bigger and better things.
Should we be concerned at all about the, the, you know, something the administ church logo appearing on...
Well, it's, it's, you're...
Do you guys know what that is?
Yeah, yeah. And they, 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 effectively, they mentioned it in here and...
Oh, yeah, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
No.
We don't want to get sued.
Yeah.
With Survey Monkey, you may get a plurality of those votes.
Yeah, I would, I would put those on Survey Monkey.
Don't include that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so don't include those, okay.
Or we can ask them to come back without that.
Okay.
I think that may be a...
Oi. No, some of them are, some of them are very nice, very nice. I, I particularly like the Pac-Man one, but... Is there any other business?
No, let's go home.
I, I, can I just?
Yeah, yeah.
Communication with council members. So we have the Outlook account.
Yeah.
Which I check twice a year.
I think...
I got, I'm sorry. So maybe I need to check it more often. I, I get that. I get stuff through my Gmail, which I do get. Sometimes I got work email, I've got Gmail. And so is there, and I'm not, we have to decide anything right here. But I am, I am a little concerned about some of the communication going forward. If, if, if a member does not check that, if there's something critically important.
So let me, let me, let me describe, because, because we just, we're, we're going through this now.
He wasn't finished.
No, and one, and I'll just, the last thing, one of the examples is the well goes out.
Yeah.
Well repaired. I'm not sure, was it communicated that the well was repaired?
No.
No.
And, and all I'm saying is, and, and so it's kind of that whole, and I'm not going to, Mike, I, you know...
Yeah.
But it's one of these things where the avenue communication to us on things like that or new businesses or whatever, that can be told to us and can't be, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it's that type of a communication. Sometimes I feel like, am I checking all my email addresses? Or do I need to be, you know, I don't know. Maybe I am the only one that feels that way, but...
I usually check my, my personal email that I provided. And when I come to the council meetings, I will occasionally check the Outlook one.
Okay.
So, so here's the issue. We, we just had a public records request from a serial public records request store.
The only one we've ever had in the city of College Place.
It's the only one we've had, but...
The only public records you've had?
No.
The only serial, the only person not actually looking for the record they're reporting.
This is, this was a, you know, this is a phishing attempt. And so if we use other, and, and for whatever reason, the auditor chose to use my personal email, I don't know why, but there was, there was a bunch of emails, or not a bunch, there were three, that came through on my personal email. If, if there's something that comes across that we're doing official communication through your personal email, you, you, you'll have to go back through your...
Personal.
Personal email and then, then, then depending on what it is, your, your device may be subject to search.
And can I also say, you also have to manage those to the Public Records Act standard and the retention schedule standards. So you can't delete them out of your own device. You are required by law to keep those for the minimum retention period, which you, you guys wouldn't even necessarily know off the top of your head what the minimum retention period is for that. For executive communications and you guys, it's...
So, and I actually, I kind of asked a twofold question there. One is communication to us on important things. I'd like to make sure we kind of reconnect with that. The other thing is that maybe I just need to check, and I understand it completely. Maybe I just need to make a point of checking the well out of it because I have no choice.
Yeah, I, I will, I will say I didn't follow up with, the, the motor went out and it was, it was end up.
Oh no.
But that's, but that's...
And I don't have a, I really don't, there's not an issue there. I'm just looking back even the predating.
Yeah.
Mike, you or Mayor, is sometimes there's, it seems like things churn along here and then they kind of fly past and people come up to us and say, hey, I noticed they're tearing that building down. And I don't want to get micromanaged about every time somebody paints a stripe on us. But some of the big chunky stuff we might be... things churn along here, and then they kind of fly past, and people come up to us and say, hey, I noticed they're tearing that building down, and I don't wanna get micromanaged about it, every time somebody paints a stripe on, I was, but some of the big chunky stuff might be interesting, but. But once again, that might be a communication through Outlook, and I need to get on board and check my Outlook email.
Yeah, cause I mean, if, if it's, uh, bigger stuff, I do tend to communicate that, with the well, frankly, the immediacy of the situation, as far as the, it was, I mean, we sent that there is a situation, but just when it was finally fixed, and there were other issues afoot, that slipped, so.
Oh, no, and here I am at home, not using water to brush my teeth.
Yeah.
Well, bottled water from.
Yeah, stand, standby to standby.
Well, I love.
No, I get that.
Lauren, I've just tried, like, on every device that I have, I just always kind of keep Outlook open, so, at work, I mean, obviously sign out when you always leave, but I do, but I use it for all of the other committees and stuff that I serve on, so I'm used to getting correspondence here, so maybe that's different, but to me, it's so much cleaner than having it in my personal email, which.
I agree with you.
Obviously will get ignored.
I agree.
And lost.
We'll do better.
And so will I.
Any other business?
Does anybody, there's an elected officials essentials webinar series that I participated in last year, um, and I was thinking about signing up again for that this year, it's for, um, training things for us, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per jurisdiction, so I don't know, I mean, I guess I can, if anybody else wants to.
I'll be doing it, I just haven't gotten around to asking, yeah.
Okay, so at least that's two of us, but we can also, so I have a link here that I can forward to your city email.
Please do.
So it's our.
With the recordings from last year, if you didn't already get it.
Can you resend that, cause if I got it, I have covered it.
I didn't already send it, but. Well, the thing with our city email is that even if we delete it, you guys keep it somewhere, right? In Exeter, so we can delete out here, it doesn't.
Yeah, if, if you're work, if you're working on.
Big Brother.
The Outlook, don't, don't delete, you're, it'll, it just stays in as, as Lisa says, you're.
I spent two hours of weeks sorting your emails for this record request, and I would be doing it at least through April.
Can we, what did they request?
All communications to and from the auditor regarding our last talks.
Well, good reading.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Luckily, she sent all of you any communication using the Outlook account.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause otherwise.
Otherwise.
You guys were about the same information, or the same search document.
Why, why she sent it to my home at email, I have no idea, but, so I spent an hour and a half combing through my home emails and any files that.
So to clarify, we shouldn't delete anything from Outlook?
You do not delete anything from Outlook, you can.
Not your, not your city email, you shouldn't.
Yeah.
We shouldn't delete anything?
That's what I just said.
I thought you guys had backups.
No, we do.
We have it, but.
But don't delete it, because if you delete it, we have to go back and search back through the backups, and that's a pain in the neck. It's, it's just there, there's no.
You just use file.
Files?
Files.
I do that for most, I, I delete spam, can I delete spam?
Yeah, you can delete.
It's nothing to do with city business.
Okay, so I've deleted spam, but I shouldn't delete anything else.
Mike, it should auto-archive after a certain time.
It ar- it, it archives.
Which should be really accessible.
We, we have an archiver, and you can search by keyword, it's just, when you search by keyword, other stuff shows up, uh, yeah, cause like, like, for, I'll give you, for instance, which is like what's causing this to go longer, uh, same time, uh, the, we were dealing with the auditor, for the auditor, we were also dealing with them for a Lean Kaizen exercise, the auditor's office on that, so even when you're searching, like, auditor and auditor, you then end up with a bunch of separate records that still show up when you're searching on the archiver, uh, so then you have to individually sort out stuff that way, so.
Well, and that's still gonna be the case if you're looking at archiver or our emails.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So how much are we charging?
My, my records and your records are retained forever.
Cause you guys are the bosses, so your, what you say and what you hear is important.
Yeah, it's overrated.
So how much does this record request cost them?
No, well.
Oh, very little, if anything, none of my time.
Don't undervalue yourself.
Yeah.
Does it your sanity?
It's costing the city a lot, it won't add up to a whole bunch for them.
What, what the hope is with these people that do this, is that they'll go through and find an error and sue us, and they hope to, they hope to do an out-of-court settlement.